For the sick, the handicapped departed and the military personnel of this community. Thank you.
Mike Fulmer.
Here.
Bruce Cawerucci.
Here.
Lynn Henderson.
Here.
Joseph Colosmo.
Here.
Jessica Pidi.
Here.
Mary Puccicelli.
Here.
Virginia Schneider.
Here.
David Tullwood.
Here.
Paul McDermott.
Here.
Gordon Collins.
Here.
Gary James in for the chief, but he had to leave for a call. Our chief William Chulio.
Here.
Software GMS.
Here.
I'm gonna put a new name to that.
Oh, yeah.
That is about one end.
Why now? It's only one end. Trust me.
One end. There you go. Mary, can you pass me the visor, please?
Just pass it on to him.
Thank you very much. All right, council like recognized, Mary Weiss.
Thank you very much. Very short one tonight. I have a few questions. Hopefully, you can study and find out some solution. About once a week, one or two, three days of the week, he comes around 1:00, 2:00 in the afternoon. I'm coming out Station Street to Washington Avenue. And what do I see at the red light? A Walmart. Not once, but usually once a week, sometimes twice a week. He's coming from the south and he's going to the north to hide.
Walmart truck.
A Walmart bag. A Walmart. That's for you to study, but it does happen. And the police have enough to do, believe me. I also want to talk just quickly. Often when I'm sitting in line on Washington Avenue or Chartier Street, I know that somebody wants to make the left turn onto Chartiers. And I'm hoping that the borough persists in trying to get some action on it. These are people who live there, want their pay taxes there. They need the same attention as we do. Another thing that I saw this week are two school buses. Oh, thank God, I didn't see any children. The two school buses going up Chartier Street. That is not the safest part of town. But I'm bringing it to your attention.
Taken by traffic.
They're little things. They could become big things. But I ask permission to do this right now. If you knew that in the borough of Bridgeville recently was found proof of a property, I'll say property, it could be when they were building the house in the neighborhood. But it's 200, 300, no, 200, 220 years old. Now, antiques up here on the avenue is 1940, 1840. The MacMillan farmhouse close to me is 1864. This is before that. This is 1820, 1830, right here in Bridgeville. I'm asking, would you all like to take a guess of what it was and how it was found?
It's still...
No, it's a marketing. Nobody knows? I know you do.
A House of Hill Repute? A House of Hill Repute.
Yes, there were a lot of houses there when I was... I was like, "I don't know where we sent them." But down that street. Anyway, that's...
Which house is it, Mary?
It wasn't human.
Which house is it?
What?
Which property is it?
It was very visible.
Because I always thought that Whispen's house was the oldest.
220, 200. Go straight up Station Street. There are two pillars that will take you into the home. I think it was a Pellet family. The name of the house was Recreation in 1820.
The pillars, they go up, that was a tree on...
Well, right beside that pillar was a tree that was so high. It was 220, whatever that is, feet, whatever. As part of it's still up there, I want to try to walk up there tomorrow. Maybe between needles and see if the owner will let us take photographs.
Which one is it?
What?
What house is it?
Straight up. And it's on the right side pillar.
You have a number?
That's Tornamenny's old house. Tornamenny's house is right there to the left.
Tornamenny's? My hearing did not...
Tornamenny's old house was right there to the left.
No, this is on this side.
That was Al de Lucas's house.
Yes.
That was Al de Lucas's house.
At one time. And he certainly wasn't dead. Now, this was one of the Pellet things. But to find something besides Indian ornaments, to me, was very... And a lot of things, it was the president of the lives or a student called. And we all went up to see the spirit taking it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Bob Frye.
Yeah, just a moment. Mary said, a little, I read about Bridgeville. That it's a very distinguished community with a great history involved with the Whiskey Rebellion, our heroic effort, those sequence of days when that happened. And I just think we should make the town better and faster. I think, I have some other stuff here, I'm just gonna give you a read later. I will go through it. I said to you this before. This is Washington Avenue. This is the traffic congestion problem we have. Four lane this way, four lane this way. This section is Washington Pike down the middle. It's a two-lane wide road. And we have Bowlerher Road, Lessnut Road, and the Major Road, all converging into that same 1,000 square foot area. The traffic congestion, that's obviously the reason for the traffic congestion. And I'm, we have got to take emergency actions to tell Pendot and the county and whoever else can help us solve the problem, to solve the problem, okay? We're screwed up. Our own business district collapsed, obviously, years ago. South Face Business District stopped expanding until relatively recently. The Great Southern Shopping Center was sold at half its price, all because of the traffic congestion. It primarily original officials solved. And we haven't been able to interest Pendot to come up with money to help solve it. I just want to show you, this again is a copy of the same plan that seven different city planners have given us. It doesn't matter if they were provided to us in 1969 or 2008. The principles of eliminating traffic have remained the same ever since the interstate highway was invented by Germany with closing dates in 1937. Essentially, I just want to show you, Bridgeville has got to develop a central business district that can compete favorably with the business district in Collier and the one in South Viet. And we can do it. Let me tell you some of the advantages we have. First of all, this is Washington Avenue, as you can see. Shady Avenue, the one that's been proposed by the planners to be extended 220 yards, is only a half a block away compared to all the other communities in the South Hills, where it's a total block away, plus steep, walking is very difficult for pedestrians. If you think of, if you can visualize, Canningsburg, Carnegie, and Mount Levenin. If they want to, if a consumer comes through here, sees something that they want to stop at, for them to loop around the block, it doesn't, that option doesn't exist. This is an ideal position to create a viable business district. The other thing I want to point out is these red squares, by the way, are areas... I'm arrogant. I'm assuming that if you do extend Shady Avenue to 220 yards, that makes it a three-lane wide, one-way street. And from the post office in this direction to Barter Road, the same thing. You will double the number of consumer motorists that will go past our businesses. And theoretically, you'll double their potential income if they can see from where they're driving parking spaces, empty parking spaces. And what I'm proposing, I guess you've seen this before. This, everything in red here is 235 additional parking spaces that can be built along the Shady Avenue extension. Plus, none of these homes will be touched. Some of those people were misinformed or...
There's a lot of property there. There's homes that are touched.
No, absolutely not. All but any...
There, we have 25 spaces. The house right through the corner.
Oh, this is where I hear?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're exactly right.
There's, you're talking about getting rid of businesses and tearing down buildings.
Well, you're gonna have to determine the...
I'm just, I know we've gone round and round with this, but...
Well, let me correct, let me correct something you just said. A fellow in this building, I've talked to him about this. He'd love to have the state purchase the property. The guy that owns this building, which is, been involved in that left-hand Tornamenny's, I've talked to him as well. That as long as they get a fair return for the building, if you create, if you sought, if you increase the number of consumer motorists down that street, the value of all those properties will drop. Let's just turn it off. Is there anything else? Again, in terms of the, I'll give you the little stuff for you later. In terms of this being the solution to the Bridgeville flooding problem, the serpentine creek eliminated by Barter Road, I plead with you, don't do that. The instability that I think one of, a couple of the councilmen mentioned of that 200-foot-long section of Barter Road, sort of in front of the cement company, that's being created because, come on, have you guys ever walked up and taken a look at the five homes that are right above that area? There's not, all of the water from the roofs, the parking, the driveways, and everything else. They're going into the drains. They disconnected. They're flooding down over the hill and creating whatever problem there is there. But I was gonna say, I'll give you some stuff that you can look through and turn... First of all, I think you should, I don't know if the borough does it, if you can pass some legislation or if it would be a grandfather clause that would protect the people from doing that. But all of that's 30,000 square feet of runoff that's going down to the problem area. But Barter Road does not have to be eliminated, but the planning commission chairman was told that it did. That's why he came up with this type of a plan. All right? And I'll go give these things out to you. You can pick them up later.
Just seeing some rulings.
I just have a couple of questions. One is, how to, how can we get a Wilburrow accept volunteers to help side the sweetest streets and plant flowers in there?
Catching me after the meeting.
Oh, okay.
That's, there are some people that are looking to, to form a committee to do that.
Yeah, because I mean, unify Bridgeville. I know it's probably too late this year to do anything.
No, it's part of the...
And then the other thing that I have, is some sort of, I understand that we have a Republican Party here in Bridgeville, you know? It's like, is there a Democratic Party here in Bridgeville that needs?
Yes.
Where do citizens find that information at?
That's what you need.
He asked me about us.
Any of us.
We have a directory of...
Well, we have a directory, but we don't have a directory of political, political things on the boroughs.
We're supposedly above politics, too.
It's election season and you're wheeling the who's...
That was just an example, okay? But I mean, you know...
In years, in years past, we've looked for candidates and everything. We've put ads into, at that time it was virtual news and everything.
Right.
And we'd always get zero response.
Yeah.
I'm just, that's why we've put it out before.
Right.
And it's basically word of mouth at this point.
I mean, even trying to get volunteers to do something is nearly impossible.
Well, here's an example. We ask the business owners to take care of some of the planners just to go out and pick up trash and that type of thing. There's one business that doesn't. That's it. So Public Works has to go up almost weekly and do that. But we had cleanup day for Bridgeville. We stopped because it was like, council, there may be like three residents. We did that for years.
Most boroughs are 65 years old also, came up volunteer. It's just people wouldn't come out.
No, it was us.
And another thing, Bridgeville, there's little spots maybe to pick up debris and other stuff. For most part, it's rather clean.
No, I'm just saying, you know, like, when we get ready for the memorial day, you know? Let's go out and sweep the streets, you know, or...
But if we do want to get a, for my Bridgeville day going, Pendot has to provide the bags and that stuff.
There's neighborhood allies, there's an organization in Pittsburgh that has groups that will come and help too.
I mean, how about the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, don't we? Nothing in Bridgeville?
Yeah, we have, but they don't come out and help with those things. The Pitt, the people from Pitt came out.
They came out.
Last year and helped us plan for planners. They helped Public Works. They came out on a weekend and we gave them, you know, materials and things to do. And they helped us. But as far as groups within, we're fine, but we just can't find volunteers.
Okay, thanks.
Excuse me, Mike. One other thing. Pendot, Bridgeville is not responsible for Phillipson doing that plan. Pendot is. No matter what they tell you, they're responsible for moving the traffic from north to south.
Thanks. All right, before we commit, I forgot to mention, we did meet before this meeting for an executive session for personnel issue. And we get to the meeting. Minutes. A motion to Borough Council regarding the minutes of February 11, 2019, public hearing estimated.
So moved.
Bruce Cawerucci.
Second.
And Nino Pizzichelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to Borough Council regarding the minutes of February 11, 2019, regular meeting estimated.
So moved.
So moved.
Bruce and Joe Colosmo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 2019-01, motion to Borough Council regarding Resolution number 2019-01, a resolution confirming that the Bridgeville Borough has formally requested a grant, has designated an official to perform the required duty between the applicant and the redevelopment authority of Alvin E. Kami, has authorized execution and delivery of any and all agreements between the applicant and RAAAC, and has assured where applicable, the provisions of local matching funds. In addition, the applicant will comply with all other provisions for the application. CITF grant application, the amount of $234,666.75 has been submitted for the Warner Avenue retaining wall project.
Make the motion.
Bruce Cawerucci.
Second.
And Nino. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. This isn't on your agenda, but I got a motion to authorize manager and solicitor to request, request for proposal for engineering services.
I'll move.
Second.
Joe Brucici and Nino. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? What's that?
The second.
Second. All those in favor, all those...
Yes.
Is there any public, I'm sorry. Was there any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Sorry for that. Motion to appoint Lennon Smith. What's the last name?
Bolore.
Oh, sorry. For interim engineering services.
So moved.
Second.
I'm gonna open up for public comment.
This is the seventh.
Being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion for Solicitor McDermott to prepare and manager's calling to advertise an ordinance regarding, regarding for the street, oh, pardon, regarding street opening permits and street openings for the streets to be replaced curb to curb.
Second.
Open for public comment? There being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Because some of the, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, you don't understand. Do you one know about this curb to curb? In other words, you do it in others who tear the road apart in some place. They only fix up to the half or, so the ordinance here, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that to go to curb to curb whoever may be distracted to those streets. So there's many municipalities have that. Do you understand that? Will we join the chairman?
Thank you, Nino.
Oh, you're quite welcome.
All right. Motion for Solicitor McDermott to prepare and manager's calling to advertise an amendment to the floodplain ordinance to require accessory uses such as dumpsters to be tethered. So moved. Bruce Cawerucci.
Second.
And Virginia Schneider. All those, open for public comment?
And just by the way, a quick explanation. Our zoning, there's a small glitch between the two ordinances. Our zoning ordinance requires non-residential uses in the M and I district to have dumpsters and to have them tethered. Our floodplain ordinance requires that accessory structures be tethered. But there are many things, dumpsters are not structures under some definitions. So it's kind of a technical flaw.
This is basically, so there's a flood event, we only have 30 dumpsters in our precinct. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Bill List. Motion to Borough Council regarding the March 2019 bill list.
I'll move.
So moved. Is that Joe Brucici and Bruce? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Payrolls. Motion to Borough Council approving the payrolls of March 15, 22, 29, and April 6, 2019. So moved. Bruce Cawerucci.
Second.
And Nino. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Monthly reports. Motion to accept the January 2019 revised real estate tax collector report.
I'll move.
Joe, Brucici.
Second.
And Bruce. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept and pay any commissions due the February 2019 real estate tax collector report.
I'll move.
Joe Brucici. And Bruce. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the January 2019 financial report.
I'll move.
Joe Brucici.
Second.
And Bruce. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the February 2019 police report.
So moved.
Bill Henderson.
Second.
And Virginia Schneider. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the February 2019 zoning report.
So moved.
Bill Henderson.
Second.
And Joe Colosmo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And real estate tax refund, the motion regarding the following real estate tax due fund due to changing assessment as requested by the real estate tax collector year 2019, Lot Block 255-P-103, the amount of $272.35 to Sims Property Incorporated.
So moved.
Bruce?
I'm in. Joe Brucici.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Community reports.
And Bruce. I don't have any.
All right. Findings, Joe?
Really nothing to report. We had normal expenses this past month. A few engineering expenses that we had that were anticipated. Unfortunately, we still have $81,000 still due from 2018 real estate taxes. So I think that we've already been provided a list and we'll, I guess, start, start looking at it and trying to understand how we can go about collecting that money.
Thanks.
That's all I do.
Parks and Rec, Joe?
I guess some folks may realize that we had an excess amount of chopped down trees, brush wood, like down in the Goffman Park, the ball field. So the borough went and we went and we got permits from the health department to, we were trying to burn these things off, which we did. We got permits from the health department and we got a diffuser-type device, which was supposed to keep the smoke to a minimum. We got some complaints from folks up and up for St. Clair. They didn't like it, so they shut us down. We got a second permit from the health department. The health department was there watching things. They saw us, said it was okay. Don't do it. And it smoked up again, so we got shut down again. So we are right now on hold. What we're going to try to do is go out and try and locate a pretty large grinder. This grinder stuff down into a mulch or whatever, and we'll go from there. So that's an ongoing project. That's what all the commotion is down at the Goffman Field down there. If you were down there, there's all kind of equipment, so...
The large reason we were doing it was to save a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. It was definitely a big money saver. Hopefully, the grinder will still be cheaper than, we looked into hauling the stuff away. It was pretty expensive to haul the stuff on there. So that's why we were trying to get rid of it this way. So that's an ongoing process. Hopefully, we get this grinder thing a little bit cleared up and we'll be able to carry on with future endeavors down at the park. We got a newly bought grant for a total of $36,000 for the restrooms down at the Goffman Park. They were in need of work. We've been down there for a long time. And we've got a $36,000 grant on a private, estimated at $45,000. So hopefully, with the work that we may be doing in the ball field down there due to flood mitigation and the, another thing, the next topic is we, the Grand Forum Block around Park, which has been ongoing for the last couple of years, is still alive. And the money will be there till December of 2020. So that, even if we have to do the work in, on the ball field, we should, she'll be able to get this, the park, Phase Two renovations down there completed. And the restroom is down at Chartier's Park. From what I understand, it is waiting for better weather to start to work up on that. So that's that on the parks. Any questions?
Tom, go. Thanks, Joe. Public Works. Nino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How much I saw are normal maintenance of the area, the road, and the trees fallen down and it's center to center. Other than that, we, will you move this note? And it's, I can tell you that we are in budget as far as the salt is concerned. Our Borough Manager, we're another, on the ton, I believe, just, just in case. But we, we're in a budget. The winter's been mild so far. Let's hope it stays that way. We did it. Okay.
It's over, it's over.
Yeah, I hope it's over, it's right. I see a couple of robbins already.
You got the next, you have the 2019...
Yeah, right, right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Nino.
Mike, I have one thing to overlook. I turned the page on this, oh, my next. Thursday of this week is the birthday of our mayor. I would just like, I wish her a very, very happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Toll?
You have to answer.
There's a lot to ask.
Oh, no, you said, you said, she said I was a baby.
So it's all... Yeah, really. Everybody, you have to be 85. She's a woman, she's 85.
She has a company here. 1934, whatever, what the heck, the calendar, the Telkens. Thank you, Mayor. We here in Strong know.
Absolutely.
Today is a god.
All right, public safety, Bill?
The only thing I really, I just wanted to thank Ray Aaronholes. He's worked with us quite a bit on safety up in that area of Bank and Winfield. And he's brought to my attention program that Pendot has some safety signs for crosswalks and things. So he and I are gonna continue to work together and look to improve that area of their safety wise. So I wanted to thank him for that.
Excellent. Hi, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. March is, of course, Women's History Month, so we're proud of all, excuse me, all the women of Bridgeville Borough, and we welcome to the Planning Commission, Justine Simeroli. We're happy to have you making history for us, future. On Thursday, March 14, at St. Barbara's Church, Gary Franjoni will be speaking on Foundations of the Faith. They have dinner served at 6:30, everything is free, so we advise you or ask you to attend if that's possible. On March 29, the Solid Rock and God Hall Center on Dewey Avenue, we're celebrating their first year here in Bridgeville, they're having a speaker from Boston, Reverend David Stewart, and they've offered an invitation for us to attend if possible, that's 7 o'clock on March 29. On last Friday, I was privileged to speak to a group of women at the Bethel Park Retirement Center, a wonderful group of ladies, very talented women, some retired actresses from the Civic Light Opera. They had very interesting stories to tell me, but they wanted to hear my story about how I got to be the mayor of this wonderful borough of Bridgeville. And I hope everyone will have a happy St. Patrick's Day, and if they have a chance, listen to Elvis Presley's rendition of "Oh Danny Boy," I was surprised at how beautiful it is. Thank you.
Here you go. Great, nice recommendation there. Sergeant James, you have anything?
No.
Just checking.
Oh, excuse me, Sergeant James, if you want to encourage people about the food drama?
Oh, yes, we are, I wasn't given any notes. We are running a food drive that we, this will be our second annual food drive with, in conjunction with Collier Township, Scott Township, Heidelberg, South Fat. Last year, we raised the largest amount of food ever that was donated to the Bridgeville Area Food Bank, so we hope to do better this year. There's drop-off locations all over the place, they're here in the borough, at the police department, and several businesses in the area.
High bar, I did. Thank you. Solicitor?
Yeah, my report, that's all I have in addition to, to, I don't know what else.
Fire chief, Ochilian.
Thanks, Mr. President. You have my report up there, there isn't, like I said, this is a new system, on the second page you'll see, I understand is mutuage received, mutuage given, which is us going out of town, and then the none means that we handled the incident in town about mutuage. So that's an add-on for our report. And just a reminder, it's our fish fry this Friday, Mary.
Please, everyone, please.
So, 4 to 7, down in Fire Department, we're going to pull this, we enjoy.
Thanks.
That's it.
Southbridge, David.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have subscriptions have gone out, so we would appreciate the support of residents who's subscribing to Southbridge, also drop-house suppliers for the pop call from it, so if you make it out the 11th in the afternoon, love to have you, play a little golf with us.
Historical Society?
Yes.
There you are.
It's a little bit longer, so, yeah. First of all, on March 11, I'm sorry, March 17, we will be celebrating eight years of Bridgeville Area Historical Society in that building over there, before that, we were behind the post office, so we've been in business for 18 years. Tomorrow, the second Tuesday of the month, again, John Euler is going to be talking about George Washington, and hopefully, next month I'll have some news to tell you, hopefully good news about that. Penguin hockey tickets are on sale, it's one of our fundraisers. The drawing is actually based on the State of Pennsylvania's drawing at 7:00 PM on March 22, which is a Friday. The game itself, for which we have two tickets, is at 5:00 o'clockish on Sunday, the 31st of March, and I just hope they win a lot more games like they did last night, so that we don't have any trouble selling the rest of the tickets. We have been exceedingly busy of all times, in February and into the beginning of March, particularly when we haven't had the very best weather either. But we've had visitors from local areas, Hannan Square, up north of the city, Virginia, the state of Virginia. We've had two people come in in the past two weeks who are writing their family histories, and they're going to need our files for that. It's been one after another, which means time goes faster, and we're trying to keep up with everything, with volunteers, by the way, we need volunteers always. I think that is it, unless somebody has a question for me, but we hope to see you all tomorrow, because that's George Washington, and of course, then at the end of the month, I'll hand out to the public the other notices that we're starting with, let's see, it's the one I never thought it would turn out to be, I think the Benjamin Franklin, is the topic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Bridgeville Library?
We should be approving our budget for 2019, next week's meeting. Also, flyer here, we're starting to do fundraising with local restaurants, we have one with Chipotle set up for the 25th, 4 to 8, we'll get 33% of the proceeds. We're going to try to work with local, or get local restaurants every couple of months throughout the year to, it's an easy fundraiser, just tell them from the Bridgeville Library. I have suppliers here, I can leave them for you if you, you know, as far as you're being those.
Ray, can you say that again?
It's March 25th, 4 to 8, Chipotle, and it will, the Bridgeville Library will get 33% of the proceeds.
Good. Do you have to say anything, or just?
Just, you have to say either representative from the, come from Library or the flyer, or I think there's something on the Facebook as well, you can get a snapshot of that.
Oh, it's on the Facebook page.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's if you want. I have another, I didn't bring up, if I may?
Sure.
Last month, there was a gentleman here from the Lower Chargers Watershed, he was here presenting one of us going to a meeting, they were having a kickoff meeting, my wife and I attended the meeting, there's about 30 people, it was in Connecticut, the Chargers Valley Lower Watershed is from Upper St. Clair down to Keats Rock, you may or may not know that, I did not know that, so we attended the meeting. And we're getting, gonna be involved on the 23rd, we're gonna have an event over at Upper St. Clair, we're gonna do a water quality workshop from 9:00 to noon, I guess, of going in the creek and testing the water. So we're gonna get more involved with that, and I can keep you abreast as far as what the cleanup yourself, what events they have scheduled for, since we're, you know, churches people are going to use here.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sure.
Parking board, anybody have a parking, plan? Nina, you have anything for plans?
No, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our manager, Lori?
I said, if anyone has any questions?
All right. Old business? New business?
I forgot one thing, I'm sorry.
So close.
We're sorry. His, old history books.
You mean about Bridgeville or just history books in general?
Yeah, we sold all the, all the World War, a lot of history books, now we're in World War II history book, that's stuck in, grounds.
Pretty soon, the current event books will get sold. All right, I'm gonna, Mr. Jordan, Bruce, I'll second, Joe, you made all the favors, all the votes, thank you, everybody.